Director for the Ontario Soccer Association. Johnny, if you can just raise your hands so people can see you. Barry Goodwin, President of the Lampton Kent Soccer Association. John Duto, President of Elgin Middlesex Soccer Association. Ladin Morich, Representative for Essex Soccer Association. And Ron Smale, President of the Ontario Soccer Association. We'd like to call on now to come on up and start his presentation.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here to this town hall meeting. We're here tonight with guests from our districts, and we want to update you on board business. Board business that's taken place over the last almost three years now. It'll actually be three years, December 13th this year. The board's been busy working each and every meeting, four meetings a year, and spending a whole day of time looking at the governance of the OSA. And I'm here today on behalf of the board to bring you a presentation, to give you an idea of where we're moving to. We want this evening to be conversational, so I'll go through my presentation, and after my presentation, Ben will coordinate and facilitate questions back and forth. We can always refer back to a slide or to a certain component if you would like to have a discussion around that. So the OSA continues to change, and the reasons we're changing is many reasons. Certainly, many people have asked me the question, "Why?" And the issue for the issue of "why" is that we're behind the times. The game has changed. The game is very business-oriented now, and our model of governance is not to the tune that it needs to be with respect to aligning with our current business model. Our current business model, of course, are clubs and districts. Clubs and districts are becoming more professional in what they do and how they do business, and we as a board need to be aligned with that, along with our neighboring bodies going forward. So the world of sport is changing, and I want to share this slide with you and talk a little bit about some of the reasons why the world is changing. Certainly, the first one is good governance. Good governance allows us to ensure that good decision-making takes place. Strategic planning is another very key component when we look at the governance of soccer, when we look at the game of soccer. The Board of Directors of the OSA has had two strategic plans. We're in our second strategic plan right now, and with those strategic plans, we have operational plans that support them. The third component is when you have a strategic plan and an operational plan, you measure what you're doing, day in and day out, and that's where people like Johnny Missley and staff within districts and staff within clubs really need to measure what we're doing and why we're doing it. The reputational credibility of the association is a critical component as well. I continue to receive many comments that our reputation isn't where it needs to be, and we need to continue to work on that and drive, drive the bar higher so that at the end of the day, what we're doing, the decisions we're making at the board level are the right decisions for the people who are on the turf, on the pitch, and obviously executing the game. Alignment is another critical component, and you'll see in those further slides, the alignment of us, not only with our districts and clubs, with our leagues, but also with our national body, our governing bodies of CONCACAF and FIFA. Communication, probably one of the most key points that have changed in the last 10 to 15 years. IT development, websites, social media, communication is very, very critical. It needs to be effective, and it needs to be strong. And if there's an area that we can all work on, it's our communication, back and forth, together, collectively, collaboratively. So I mentioned that the OSA had a strategic plan back in 213 to 215. It had four pillars, and these are the four pillars. One was organizational stability, long-term player development, membership value, programs and services. Certainly, the organizational stability talks about the governance and the finance side of the game. Long-term player development, which we initiated approximately four years ago, about looking at the issue of grassroots play, training, coaching involvement, coaching development, et cetera. This strategic plan had an issue of membership value and also programs and services. From that, staff put together operational changes for that 213 to 215 plan. So we had the rollout of LTPD, and we learned a lot, learned a lot of lessons from the rollout of LTPD. Club leagues grew around the province. It was good to see the clubs growing and flourishing within their respective districts, within their respective communities. Districts' leagues were on the rise. Districts were doing more from a league-competition perspective. Regional leagues continue to flourish, and we've done quite a bit of work recently, which we'll talk about with respect to our regional leagues. OPDL was introduced as a standards-based league, and the standards-based league is a critical component for player development and alignment for national team play, national team duty. We also introduced League One, which is our Pro-Am league against standards-based. You're going to hear a lot, and you continue to hear a lot about standards-based and the importance of standards-based. The board also went through a very difficult process of rules rewrite. We had over 600 double-sided pages of rules, bureaucratic nightmares, barriers within our rules. We've trimmed it down to less than 200 double-sided. Still not good enough, gentlemen. We need to keep working on those rules so that we relieve any barriers that are there, especially at a club-district level. And then, of course, with the whole issue of governance review, you want constant review, constant enhancements moving forward. Recently, the board approved the 2016-2018 strategic plan. The pillars were very similar to what was there 213 to 215. The big changes came in the first one, which is organizational stability, which talks about finance and governance and how we, how we move and how we draw the game forward. And of course, the other two, membership engagement and building partnerships, are very, very critical components of our strategic plan of 216 and 218. I want to remember, I want to remind you that the membership engagement was another critical piece. We have the academies within the province of Ontario. We've been working hard, and we've been working very effectively with our academies. We're working very effectively at the board level in our discussions about academies and how we embrace academies into the process. And then, of course, the game is not built on money. The game is built on partnerships and relationships. And there's obviously a lot of work that can be done with respect to corporate sponsors, with respect to us working together as a collective at the end of the day, and listening to each other. Listening to not just here, but listening to what is actually being said, why it's being said, and putting processes in place to make the changes that are required going forward. So as I mentioned, with the strategic pillar of organizational stability, that's what we're going to focus on tonight to communicate to our clubs and our districts, what's happening at the OSA. So going, going forward, we're going to be looking at a new, smaller board, and we'll talk to these items one-on-one as I go through the presentation. We're also going to be talking about the district roles for board and staff. We'll chat a bit about the improved interface between districts, clubs, academies, and OSA staff. This is a critical component. We want the operation of the organization working collectively and collaboratively together, working as a unified group. We also want to look at the issues of improved engagement with clubs. Clubs are the foundation of the game. Clubs are foundation of this province when it comes to the game of soccer or game of football. Maybe some people in this room prefer the word "football," which is fine, but we need to look at improved engagement going forward to give the clubs and to hear what the clubs are saying, what's working, what isn't working, and not just listen to that, but actually act upon it in the future. And then, the last but not least, is more direct communication. When I talk about more direct communication, more direct communication with the clubs. We have filters in the system when it comes to communication that break down for whatever reason, and we want to set up and have set up a direct communication link with our clubs through our districts, and we also have that linkage, of course, with our districts. So in the case of communication, we've put together information bulletins, action bulletins, and through you as club members, looking at a person who will be your point of contact. So at the end of the day, when Johnny sends out an information bulletin or Johnny's staff sends out an information bulletin or an action bulletin, it not only goes to the district, but it comes directly to the clubs. So that's been initiated. That was initiated at our September meeting, and we're hopeful that that initiative will obviously improve communication. It's a 13-letter word. It's a hard word. It's something that we really need to work on going forward. At the same time, we want you to know that we're not alone, okay? Canada Soccer has gone through significant governance change. FIFA has gone through certainly a humongous amount of change since its unfortunate circumstances that were brought forward. But again, FIFA was where it is and is where it is because of poor governance. CONCACAF, that's our way to the World Cup. CONCACAF is also changing. With the appointment of Victor Montagliani as the president of CONCACAF, there will be significant change, not only for all the members of the CONCACAF regions, but for those who, again, have not made the significant change that's needed in governance review. And then, of course, governance modernization across Canada. When I talk about governance modernization across Canada, I want you to know that the 10 provinces and the three territories are making change simultaneously as we go through this whole process of improving the game of soccer at the board level. And with that, I want to just take a moment and share a short video with you. This is a video that was put together by Soccer Nova Scotia. It's a great video that really outlines what we're trying to do, from the separation of roles and responsibilities, the separation of operation versus policy, board business, and it's, I hope that you really are able to see and pick up the alignment as we go through this video.
Soccer Nova Scotia is excited to introduce changes to how we operate. We're changing the role of our board and creating operational teams to make us more dynamic and effective in our day-to-day business. Currently, the Board of Directors oversee our daily operations. This means Soccer Nova Scotia staff are restricted in their jobs because they need the authorization of the board to make some decisions on projects. This process is ineffective and inefficient, so here's how we're fixing that. With the new system, the executive director will be responsible for operations, managing a team of Soccer Nova Scotia staff and operational committees. Staff will have more authority to run daily projects in a timely manner. Traditional committees will be maintained, including long-term player development, competitions, marketing, league, and member services. The new look committees will be composed of staff, league, club, and regional representatives, as well as coaches and officials instead of Soccer Nova Scotia board members. Committees will meet and report to the executive director, who will then update the Board of Directors on their progress. Similarly, the role of Board of Directors will shift from operational to a governance model. They'll be focused on strategic planning, risk management, finance and audit, as well as governance and nominations. Board members will be independent of regions or clubs. Instead, they'll include individuals with specific skill sets to assist Soccer Nova Scotia with fulfilling their mandate. Board members will no longer sit on operational committees. Finally, a separate members forum will be created. This forum will include the seven regional presidents or designates. The forum will meet quarterly to discuss regional concerns or ideas. They will bring their requests to the executive director and president of Soccer Nova Scotia, who will then relay them to the committees and board. This will ensure regional presidents' representation and input on Soccer Nova Scotia management. The new look Soccer Nova Scotia governance model will help us all work better with more clarity on roles and responsibilities. Staff and members will have input and authority to make decisions on operational matters in a more timely fashion, and the board can focus on long-term vision for Soccer Nova Scotia to ensure we're all heading in the right direction.
So I'm not, I'm not saying that we are going to mirror or mimic what Soccer Nova Scotia is, but we're looking at what's best for the OSA going forward. These types of, types of development, types of discussions are happening across Canada, and what I'd like to do is just look at the past for a minute. So this is the OSA 30 years on, and back in 1985, when our current board structure was formed, 1985, we had 14 staff, and currently now we have 36. We had a budget of 1.1 million. This year will be 11 and a half to 12 million. Registrants, we had at that time 180,000. Currently, we're at 450,000. Number of districts was 21. Currently, our district place is 21. Executive committee members of seven. Currently, we have an executive committee size of seven. Board types was operational in 1985, continues to be operational, although we have made some significant strides with respect to moving away from that in our current term. And technology was paper-based, and now it's digital. So when you look at this, our board, our governance, the way we govern the game has not changed in the last 30 years. We need to catch up. We need to have a look at what's going to work best for us, and we need to listen to our districts and our clubs and get that engagement going today as we take this process across the province of Ontario and look at where we can make significant strides or significant improvement. This is the current setup of our governance model. The OSA board with a board of 28. It has standing committees which support them. The executive director has the operational committees and staff. Currently, there's five operational committees with, that Johnny looks after here, and these are the standing committees of the board that the board populates and looks at. So you can see there's a real difference here, and if you were to draw a line across the screen, this is all operational, this is all policy, decision-making process going forward. Discipline and appeals, we always leave it alone. It should be separate. Discipline and appeals should be people on discipline appeals who have no affiliation with clubs, no affiliation with leagues, no affiliation with boards, no affiliation whatsoever. Unbiased people, when, when issues are brought to them, you get an unbiased decision. You get an independent decision. We don't have that here right now, and it's something we need to work towards. So I wanted to show you what the current setup was, and as you can see, as chair of the board, I have 28 people sitting around the table. So John, Barry, Maladin, and others are all part of that process. A very, very difficult process when John may potentially have a big issue for Emsa, and he's there to lobby 27 other people to support him. At the end of the day, it doesn't work. It doesn't work. We need to change that. That representative issue at the board doesn't work, and that's why we're here to talk about that today. Oops. So back in 2013, December the 13th, 2013, and as I mentioned, we're at three years. This coming December, the board met, and through multiple meetings with the board, we looked at the requirements of good governance, and you'll see posters around the room that talk about the principles of good governance, talk about the policy of the board, talk about good governance at the Canada Soccer level. We, as well as nine other provinces and three territories, are aligning ourselves with the Canadian Soccer Association. The Canadian Soccer Association made their change five years ago. It took them eight years before that five years to get to where they are today, so it's a long period of time, and I'd like you to remember that governance is about a journey, okay? There's no finite end, but during the journey, you look at how business is being conducted. You make strategic improvements going forward. You make change so that people at the grassroots, people who deliver the game on the ground, have the benefit of, have good decision-making at the board level. The board's role has been changing for the last three years. We have given operational issues to Johnny and his staff. Johnny looks, looks after the operational issues with the staff, and we now at the board, currently, we're not diving into operational issues. What happens at the board level? Johnny comes to the meeting. He's the one employee who reports to the board, and he presents to the board through an executive director detailed report, all the activity of the operational committees, all the activity of technical, all the activity of match official coaching development, and all the activity on programs, programs and services. So we've moved from an operations to a strategy, policy, strategic board. It's been a difficult change, and there's been some pushback. Obviously, when you've done something for 30 years, it is difficult to change, and as we all know, people don't like change. But this separation now is from our perspective defining very clearly what roles people have. What is the board's role? What is staff's role? And how do they interface? And with staff, working with the districts, how does that linkage work so that at the end of the day, the clubs are heard? The clubs are heard, not at just the district level, but through Johnny's office. That is critical going forward. That's a component we didn't have in the old governance structure. That's what we're driving for now, where your communication through your district president, John, will be a direct linkage to Johnny Missley and staff, and you'll see how that sets up. We adopted the good governance principles, so the little, or not little, but the cardboard boards that are around the room in red print, they will tell you what the good governance principles are of the CSA. The CSA has mandated that we must separate operations from policy. So there's no discussion. We got to move. We got to find a structure. We got to find an alignment that'll work for us. I don't want us to be copying other provinces, but we have the ability to work with other provinces and territories to make the best decisions here we can at the OSA. And the last comment here was that the last AGM, which was June of this year, the board voted on and agreed to have all the current terms of board members end June 2017. So technically, all our terms, my term, Barry's term, Maladin's term, John's term, everybody's term ends. Executive committee, everybody ends, June 2017, and we have a starting point now to put a new board concept into place. So the new governance model, this is what the new governance model was going to look like. It'll be a board of 12, 12 directors, right here, okay? Remember the district presidents forum that was mentioned in the Nova Scotia Soccer video? There it is there for us. So the 21 district presidents will be advisory to the board. There'll be no representative on this board. It'll be a competency, competency-based board. The district presidents will have a direct link with the executive director, and the executive director will be the one employee who reports to the board of directors. From that, there's standing committees of four. That's what we're looking at. We may change that. We need to see where our strategic direction is going, what we need to support the board of directors, and there'll be five operational committees, no change in head count of 36 staff. Again, you'll see the judicial bodies are separate and set aside. Independent people, I'm sorry, independent people managing discipline and appeals, critical component. I hear it time and time again. Something went wrong. Something went awry. It goes to appeal, and when it comes back to the district, club wasn't supported, or whoever wasn't supported, and the first thing that people say to me is, so-and-so was on the appeal committee. No wonder it went through. We hear this time and time again, gentlemen. We need to separate it. We need to fix it. It has to be fixed. So as I mentioned, the new board structure will be competency-based. It will be a fully elected board. So there's 12 positions. There's the president's position, the vice president's position, five directors, which are resident in regions, and five independent directors, which can come from anywhere in the province of Ontario. You'll see the note there? Three directors, minimum, of each gender. We must have that going forward. Again, this is another principle that the board of directors has adopted. We need, we need females. We need diversity at the board level so that at the end of the day, all areas are represented in this province. So we're really going to strive as a board to have a diverse board at the end of the As I mentioned before, this is the way we're split up, 21 districts. What we see happening is, we haven't decided yet as a board. We're having our board meeting on December the 9th, 10th, and 11th of the next month. We're going to start to separate and break this up into regions. When I mentioned five regional directors, we're going to be looking for a regional director from that region who is a resident, not a representative. There's a huge difference. A representative of that district or of that region, and that individual will have competencies that support the work of the board. At the end of the day, that's what we're looking for, okay? So the district presidents forum's role, which again is an important one, because obviously when we move the, the districts off the board, people are concerned, will their voice be heard? The process that we're putting in place, the voice will be heard. The district presidents, your districts, will still continue to exist. This is not about elimination of the districts. It's about redefining their role, redefining their responsibility going forward. That's a huge, huge difference from what we have currently. So the president's forum, of which I said there's 21 districts in it, it'll be the interface between the executive director Johnny Missley and between the board of directors. We still haven't decided the total number of meetings that are required each year. We're going to let that members forum get together, work with Johnny. Of course, there's budget, there's finance, there's all those issues that need to be worked out at the end of the day, but we truly believe that that's a good starting point. The district's presidents forum will receive collective input and feedback on operational matters and development and implementation of the strategic plan. So that will be one of the roles or a series of roles that the district presidents forum will form, and it will, more importantly, enhance networking amongst the districts. There's no opportunity for the districts to network on our current board. You try. You want to social on Friday. You want to have people together on Friday so you could talk. Well, this past year, John worked hard with Barry and with Maladin and Joe Borelli from Windsor in putting together an inter-district league. My understanding was it was a pretty successful first venture pilot. We want to see those types of relationships and partnerships expand going forward. We want competition to be developed in a broader scope going forward, of course, ensuring that the principles of LTPD, ensuring that the principles of good player development are not compromised. Club and district benefits. Club working groups, it's something we would like you to think about. We believe the clubs need to be an integral part of this forum, an integral part of this whole governance model going forward, and we're looking at the possibility of having coaching development, match official development, athlete development, competition and club development, whereby the clubs get together with their districts, the districts meet at the district forums level, and we look at the opportunities of having our clubs more involved in the decision-making process going forward. Johnny's committed to making that action happen, making it work. We need to launch this and put it under test and see how we can do as a collective, as a cooperative group. Some of the outcomes and benefits, it's, it'll obviously end up in predictable and consistent decision-making by the board. There will be no person on the board now wearing two or three hats. They'll wear one hat, and that one hat is a provincial hat. Currently, we have board members who wear multiple hats at the meeting. So when decisions are made, our, actually, our current bylaw state, correct me if I'm wrong here, gentlemen, current bylaw state that the board member is there to represent their district. That doesn't help at a provincial level when you're there to represent your district. Your district business is important, and there needs to be flexibility built into the system because Emsa is different than LKSA, Lampton Kent. Lampton Kent is different than Exa. Exa is different than Peel Halton. Peel Halton's different than Ottawa. So flexibility needs to be built into the system so we don't have this competition of lobbying at the board level where Emsa needs something put in place because of your uniqueness, because of the way the game's developed here. It doesn't work in other places, and we spend half our time trying to lobby each other in what we're going to support or not support. This will go out the window in this new structure going forward. There definitely will be improved communication and definitely improvement in the policy-program decision-making process. There'll also be greater advance notice of policy and program implementation. One of the major criticisms we received in association is that we announce something and it doesn't get the proper time to be actually communicated, or its timing is off, it's not at the right cycle of what I'll say, club budget process, club competition process, district budget process, one of the major criticisms. So we're now looking at issues like fare incre, aren't it, fare increases? That's in my old TDC days. I apologize. We're looking at the issue of registration fee increases. If we're going to do a fee registration increase, it should be two years down the road, not in the next six months, not in the next four months, not in the next nine months. That allows people to get everything together that they need to get together. Sure, some will, will support the increase, some won't, but for me, the timing is critical in what we do and how we do it. And then, effective and a regular performance assessment of the board and staff. So the board will have an evaluation process that it will, it will have to respond to and will have to live up to, and then Johnny, his evaluation will be done by the board, and then Johnny does the evaluation of the complete staff. Hopefully, that type of arrangement will have Hopefully, that type of arrangement will happen within the districts and within your clubs. Hopefully, you have some kind of performance review so that you can see at the end of the day what is working and what is not working, and more importantly, the human resources that you have tied to your club, is it the right human resource that you need going forward? So the next steps, we're in the stages of appointment of a transitional nominations committee. So hopefully, you've seen or heard on the website, or seen on the website, or through social media, or through our newsletter, the issue of we're trying to form a transitional nominations committee. It'll be a committee of five people, three of who are independent, two will come from the current board. And the role of the five persons is to go out and recruit people with competency skills that have been identified by the board for the new board of directors. That transitional nominations committee will kick in in February 2017, will work through to May, and then a full slate of people will be brought forward to the AGM, where you as the members will elect your new board going forward. Currently, we're doing preparation of bylaw amendments. Our bylaws haven't been touched in a long time. We're now reviewing and having to redo all our bylaws. It's kind of like watching paint on the turf dry like last night, right? Everybody smile a bit for me? Good stuff? Well, bylaws can be pretty painful when you start looking at them and writing them, and more importantly, understanding them and writing them so at the end of the day you understand what the bylaw is supportive. So we're going through that process now. A set of bylaws will be presented to the board. A special general meeting will be called for February 2017, and our goal is to have the bylaw changes in place so that when we come to the AGM in June of 2017, we're ready to roll to a lack of board of 12 new people, and we're off and running. And then, of course, through this period of time, is continued dialogue and discussion. That's why we've asked you to gather here. And as Ben said, I thank you for taking the time to be with us tonight. I thank those on our livestream who are around the province here to participate as well. This is such an important project. We need your engagement, and we need your full support and participation. So with that, we'll take some comments and questions. I'll ask Ben to come back up, and we'll go from there. And if we need to review or look at any slides that were previously presented, we'll do that as well.
Thanks very much, Ron. Everyone, a round of applause for Ron, please. Could ask the panel members to come on up to the front now. This is your town hall, folks, so we want to have questions from you, so please don't be shy. If you have a question, just raise your hand, try and get my attention, I'll come over to you with the mic. And we ask that you just keep it on topic. We're talking about governance here tonight, so anything you saw in the presentation is fair game, and let's keep it on point. So Johnny, I'll start with you. We'll take an email question just to warm up the room a bit. So what would you say are some of the main reasons this change needs to occur in Ontario at this time?
Well, Ben, as Ron did in his great presentation, it's pretty clear that this is long overdue. I think this is an example of this sport in this province, this game in this country that is moving into the 21st century. And when it comes to governance modernization, as Ron had mentioned, albeit that soccer is going through it at varying levels, governance modernization has been taking place across Canada for the last decade, and it better aligns, as Ron said, to what is the operations and the business of the game. The days are gone where it is 100% run by volunteers. In today's era, there's so many responsibilities to run a sports association. Risk management is at a level that is hard to manage. Liability, insurance, injury, all those types of things that are a part of sport are becoming both costly as well as time-consuming. The responsibilities of organizations to create a vision and a strategy, and with that matching operational plans to activate that strategy, these are the new ways of organizations to be able to operate. And as you saw up on the screen, this organization is now an 11 and 1/2, with next year 12, 12 and 1/2 million dollar organization. And it's grown over that time because services and demand for services and programs have grown at the same time. So as a result, when you grow as an organization and have professional staff day-to-day that work around the province, to having board restructuring to take place to make sure that they're really the key decision-makers who the membership elect have the acumen to lead the association ultimately on behalf of the members, and staff support them, these are the ways of the new world in sport, in amateur sport, going forward. So Ben, it's part of change that we saw CSA do a number of years ago. A lot of other soccer associations across the country are far ahead of we as an organization, and it's time for the OSA now to move forward in that. And I've been with the organization now coming up two years, and it's nice to be a part of this change because this sport has so much upside potential because the assets of the sport in this province are so strong that our future is very, very bright going forward.
Questions, folks? Don't be shy. Just raise your hand. This gentleman here in the front looks like he's very interested, so I'm going to sit down beside him and see if he has a question for us.
Nothing like being put on the spot, Dan.
No, I don't have a question.
Okay, well, we'll keep it going then. We've got some email questions. Barry, why don't we listen to you a little bit? So there's some question here about what would you say to those in the district who aren't certain about this change? And again, folks, if you have questions, just raise your hand.
Well, people who aren't into this change, putting it mildly. Yeah, putting it mildly, it's like the dinosaurs, they're dying out. We've got to change. We're in the 21st century, and we haven't changed much in the last, well, coming from England, the last 100 years, except wages have gone up. So, but they've, it's a change that's been needed. I came on to the board of directors eight years ago, and we were just starting out then talking about governance. Now, we're at the time where governance is going to be a new part of the OSA. But it's just one of those things, we've got to move with the times, otherwise the sport will die. It doesn't matter that we've got 450,000 registrants. If we don't fit in with the rest of the soccer communities throughout the world, we'll just pass away. And you've only got to look at our men's national team, and it's all part of the same scenario. So, but, no, that's all I can think of.
That's pretty well said. We've got some questions from Twitter here tonight as well. John, why don't you weigh on this one? District presidents will continue to play a role in Ontario. What are your thoughts on this advisory role and what its impact will be?
Well, to a certain degree, it will be pretty well similar to what we have now, but we're not having all 28 of us sitting around a table trying to come up with those ideas. So basically, it's streamlining what we're going to come up with and giving those ideas to Johnny so he can present them to the appropriate governing levels. Again, with the whole process, if the clubs are doing the same thing, and coming from the districts, then hopefully that the board-level advisory committee is gathering information from those club advisory boards to put them through to Johnny and his group.
Who has a question? Perfect. You're saving me. I was going to run out of questions really quickly. Just stand up.
Hi, I'm Joe. I was just curious as to what the process is for choosing the regional directors? Is that going to be advertised? Is that going to be open recruitment? How exactly that's going to work?
Ron, why don't you handle that one?
So the regional directors, the way the election process will work is the nominations committee will go out and recruit people. So we will do a massive communication. Johnny's department, department head in business development, which Ben and Bjorn and others are part of, will do a massive communication starting in the middle of February, seeking out recruitment for board members. So whether it's the president, the vice president, five regional directors, five independents, people will be able to apply, people will be able to put in an application form. They'll submit, it was Joe, Joe, they will submit their CV, they will submit their resume, and they'll indicate what position they would like to run for in their application process. The nominations committee, which I said before, is an independent group of people. Two board members currently on the existing board will be on that nominations committee. Three independents will be on that committee as well. They will review and they will obviously look at all the applications that come in. So let's just for argument's sake, there's 200 applications for 12 positions. Then what will happen is the nominations committee will separate out who they believe are, or who they believe are the best candidates for those 12 positions. The full slate will get presented to the membership. So this is not about a group of five people, just picking 12 people to go forward. That whole slate will be presented to the membership, but it'll be prioritized to say, these are your top 12, and here's the reasons why you're top 12 at the end of the day. All positions will be elected, and as I said before, we have to have diversity on the board. So that diversity is a key component. We need female leadership, we need different groups, from our special needs groups right through to lawyers and all that type of individuals to take us forward. So it'll be a well-communicated, well-documented, we'll use social media, we'll use websites, we'll use the district, and we'll use the club system to research and find people to fill those roles. Right now, we're looking for three people to fill the nominations committee. I'm hopeful someone in this room will put an application in and potentially be part of that process going forward. We actually need people to step forward now and say, I want to be part of this. I want to help it, I want to understand it, I want to educate it, and I want to communicate to those in the province of Ontario. Again, the regional directors, they'll be a resident of the five regions that we identify at the end of the day. So east, central east, central west, west, and north. But the board still has to come together to identify those regions and make sure that they're satisfied where that imaginary line goes on the map at the end of the day. The Canadian Soccer Association is streamlined the same way. They have six regional directors, where they come from the provinces. So again, it's a person within the province who's a resident within the province who has good competencies, good skill sets, good soccer knowledge to take the game forward.
Ron, can you share with us who our Ontario regional rep is at the CSA level, if you're aware?
Nick Pontus is our current regional rep. He's currently on a three-year term. We didn't mention the terms, but in the initial stages of the CSA, they did a phased-in approach over three years. We asked the board if they would like to do a two-year phase-in with that, and the board said no. They wanted to do it as a complete slate of 12 people going forward. So the president will have a three-year term to start, the vice president will have a two-year term to start. Of the five regional directors, I believe it goes two, two, and one, and then on the independent, it goes one, two, and two. And the reason those terms are like that is so that we can start the rotation, so at the end of the day, you don't have, you know, half your board finishing their term and leaving the board. So there'll be some phase-in for us from the terms of what they've been assigned to, but those then will phase in over, I believe it'll be a maximum of three years, and then after that, things should roll out quite nicely and quite smoothly.
See a question here from Ian Campbell. I'll just pass him the mic in.
Just a quick question from whoever wants to take it. Fast forwarding to this coming January, the Emsa Annual General Meeting, and then maybe talking about the 2018 Emsa Annual General Meeting, how are they the same or different than how the meetings are handled currently?
Are you referring to the Emsa AGMs? Okay, so at this point, I'm not aware of any changes to those, okay? Once we realize and get an understanding of myself fully how this is going to work, then there may be some changes put through as to how the districts hold their AGM and how they're going to set their boards up. But at this time, I'm not aware of any change moving forward.
That's correct.
But we're open to suggestions, though.
That's correct. There is no planned change of district business, if I can use that term, district business. We want the districts to continue to function and operate the way they currently are. We want to get the top of the pyramid here straight from a governance perspective, and then hopefully, some districts have taken some initial change, Ian, some districts. I know Durham has made some changes whereby they've separated their board from their operations group, so their operations staff, very similar to what we've set up here. But there is no planned direction or directive from us, or mandate from us, to change district business. It's important we move through this process in a very process-oriented way, that we evaluate what we're doing and the decisions that we're making, and then, of course, make the appropriate changes when the appropriate changes are required.
In saying that, at our first town hall meeting in Burlington, we had a club that made the statement in this type of session that what you're talking about at our club level, we've done this five years ago. What's taking you so long? So it's interesting how this trickles down, or in this case, trickles up.
Who's next? Don't be shy, folks.
Hi, my name is Tom. You said the new board would be elected by the membership. Could you define exactly who's included in the membership?
Good question.
Sure, our current membership is the districts. So we're hoping that when AGM comes time at the OSA, we're hopeful that every time the districts, we encourage our clubs to attend our AGM. We encourage our clubs to be part of their district decision-making process. So my thought process is, my opinion is, Tom, that the districts will have good decisions and make good decisions with their clubs, and they'll review who is being, say, put up for election for certain positions. As I said before, all the information will be circulated across the province. So at the end of the day, if there's 20 people vying for 12 positions, you will have access, Tom, to their CVs and to what their vision is being on the new board. So currently, our membership is our districts, and you as clubs and leagues are members of your district.
Who's next?
Yeah, the other issue, and this is an important one from my perspective, and I believe it's important to the three gentlemen who sit here, and that is, we're looking at changing the voting structure. Our current voting structure is based on dollars. So the bigger the district, the more votes. The district that has the bigger registration, more money, more votes. And at the last AGM, we put in a new voting structure whereby we want to flatten the voting structure, maintain to a certain degree the percentile, and we're working through this. This will go again to the board meeting of December, whereby at the end of the day, we want to see a balanced voting structure across this province. It's not right that four districts can determine the destiny of the OSA going forward because they're big and have lots of money. That's wrong. And so we're looking at a voting structure to change the voting structure. I'll be quite upfront, at the last AGM, we reached 58.8% of the membership was willing to change the voting structure to give our smaller districts like Emsa, Lampton-Kent, Exa, Timmins, smaller places like that, a greater opportunity to have a balanced voting structure. And of course, it's covered under bylaws, and when you change bylaws, you need 66.23% to change bylaw. So there was an opportunity for us to make that change last June. We fell a little bit short. I think the reason we fell a little bit short was I believe there could have been some better communication and education around what we're trying to accomplish. We're going to come back with that at the December board meeting. I can tell you publicly that Peel-Halton, our largest district in Ontario, has agreed to a balanced structure, and they're supporting the flattening, whereby at the end of the day, Peel-Halton, in the proposed structure that they've put forward, will have 14 votes, and someone like Emsa will be in the eight or nine region, depending on what your registration and population is. So that is a huge change from the voting structure today, where Peel-Halton has 980-some-odd votes. votes. How many do you have, John?
300.
Right. So 300 and change? A little less than TSA? What'd you say, Barry?
60.
60 votes. And he's, he's battling against a region with 980-some-odd votes. So I hope you see that we're looking at a lot of components here and it's not about taking power away. Some people say we're taking power away from the districts. I believe we are actually empowering the districts. We're giving the districts the ability to manage their clubs and work with their clubs versus try to come to a board level and lobby people to get what they need at their club level. So for example, if John had an initiative with this group, okay? And the initiative with this group is, and I'll use it as a good example, the Emsa District Soccer League. You changed it on me, didn't you? It used to be the L-D-Y-S-L, right, Tom? It's now the Emsa District Soccer League. They've asked for staff to look at changes with respect to how the leagues are being, how their league is being operated. Why are the registrations gone down for the last five years? I met with John and his team and I met with the league, okay? And from those discussions, there'll be a presentation made to staff and Johnny will evaluate it. Johnny and his team will look at it. And at the end of the day, from my perspective, if there needs to be some modification and some flexibility given within our districts' environments, we should do it. But it has to be done in a very process-oriented way. It has to be done in a very methodical, thought-out way. So if anybody comes forward with emotion and says, we got to change because of no standings, no stats, no scores, provide the rationale, provide the factual information why, and then you've got an opportunity to move that forward. So good opportunity, just to give a little bit of an example there. And my role as president, currently, my role as president is to work with John and work with Barry and work with Mulattin and all those other districts across the province to say, what is good going forward? We then give that information to Johnny. Johnny and his team evaluate it. And of course, at the end of the day, we don't want any of our principles compromised. So we give that operational component to Johnny and we come back together as a collective and say, what's going to work, what's not going to work going forward.
Mulattin, we haven't heard from you yet. Why don't you give us your thoughts on this process and how it benefits our province?
Thanks, Ben.
Just hold the mic up to your mouth.
I believe we all agree something is wrong. We have to make a change. Look at our rankings. We're pretty close to be 100, number 100. I came from the country where, where we got a four-and-a-half million people and then they qualified for every World Cup, every European Championship. This is the richest and best country in the world. And we have to make a changes. I've been, I experienced seven OSA presidents and we've been going in a circle year after year for so many years and like has been said already, it was hard to make some of the changes for whatever reasons. And there was quite a few of those reasons. Personal, serving the district interest, not all picture, on and on and on. So this is a long, long overdue and we have to proceed with this. And I also congratulate our president. Like I said, I'm not saying this to make around feel good, but this is the hardest working president that I experienced, changing seven of them. And also Johnny, as a fresh blood with OSA in the last few years, I think it's going to be a change, it'll be better for all of us and for the game and for our athletes. So that's what I'd like to say, that to support this, it must. My district fully supports this idea and like I said, my district is many ethnic clubs. And basically, if it wasn't up to ethnic clubs, there would be no soccer in Windsor. So like I said, there is no brain in here. Let's keep moving and it'll be better for, for our country and for the game of soccer. Thank you.
Thanks, Mulattin. We're going to take a 15-minute break now. There is coffee, refreshments and snacks over in the back corner. Collect your thoughts, have some conversation and we'll come back in about 15 minutes. Thanks, guys.
We had a question from Jamie and he wanted to know, does the panel expect the new governance model within their respective regions?
Being in the club system, being in leagues, clubs, district system, having worked my way up through this process, the benefits, the benefits Ben was to the clubs or to the players of the clubs, was that the question again, just refresh my mind?
The question was, in what ways does the panel expect the new governance model to benefit the clubs within their respective districts?
Okay, so it wasn't planned that way, but if you could look at the screen, this new initiative that we've been thinking about exploring, I believe is one of the most critical components of the new governance model going together for clubs, leagues and districts, whereby we talked initially about the Members' Forum, the 21 District Members' Forum, there's now an opportunity for the clubs of those districts to come together, share best practices, share the linkages that are required on the competitive side of the game and on the best practices side of the game, and through these types of working groups, change what needs to be changed at the club level. We all say that clubs are the foundation of the game, but your voice is not being heard. In this new model, your voice will be heard. And if it's not heard, that means that the people who are fulfilling those roles aren't doing what they should be doing and you should replace them. And as members, you will have the electoral ability to do that as well. So this new initiative or process through the District Presidents' Forum will create great linkages. In fact, we've, we've basically started here, John, looking at your new district league, Emsa District. We met initially with the league, John invited me down, the district league's going to put a business plan together, some ideas together, Johnny's arranged for staff to come down on December the 5th and will continue that dialogue. That from my perspective, Ben, is the club's voice being heard. That from my perspective is the league's voice being heard and the district's voice being heard, where it goes right back to Johnny's group, the technical people, about what's working and what isn't working within each of the areas involved. So whether it's grassroots, it's competitive model, it's the pro model, Ian, whatever it is at the end of the day, there's that linkage that's created and I believe it'll be really beneficial to the clubs of each and every district. The District Presidents' Forum, I chaired the District Presidents' Forum at the CSA for four years. When the CSA made its governance model change, the district presidents voted themselves off the island. That's what I'm asking everybody to do with the OSA model, vote ourselves off the island and create a District Presidents' Forum whereby they will meet on a regular, consistent basis, be it through meetings, conference calls, emails or whatever it is at the end of the day, and discuss the issues that the district needs to work on with its clubs and its leagues at the end of the day. As I said before, it can't be brought to the current board table because, to be honest, nobody's interested in Emsa, they're interested in their own district. When you actually watch at board meetings what goes on, it's about their district a lot of times. And that's no disgrace, that's no, I'm not trying to put anybody down here, but that's how the discussions form. And this opportunity now of a renewed structure, a new way of doing business will allow that interconnectivity that's required to allow those people, those leaders within the clubs, leagues and districts, to put initiatives in place that benefit them at the, at the end of the day. Come AGM, you'll still hold all the issues on election, you'll still hold all the issues on finance, you'll still hold all the issues on fees, okay? And you'll hold the issues on your auditors. Those are the four key components that clubs and districts are really involved in at the AGM level. Now we're saying in the day-to-day operation and in the strategic planning going forward, you'll have input. Your actual district, your actual clubs will have input and I think that's critical. I think that's a huge change.
Take another question from Twitter before we bring it back to the room. Highlander AFC has asked, what is the competency, sorry, what is the competency base for a board member? Is it football? Is it business strategies? Johnny, perhaps you can explain a little bit of what they'll be looking for from board members?
Sure, Ben, it's a very good question. I was in a discussion earlier over here that in my history in sport, I've had a chance to work with organizations that have done the transition, have gone from what is described as a board as we have right now to a competency-based board, and I've also worked for competency-based boards as well as boards that have struggled with the transition. So it's really a challenge and also an opportunity to have a makeup of board members that are, for lack of better words, captains of industry that have a passion, common passion for the game of soccer or football. And what's been developed in this specific process with the Ontario Soccer Association is that there's a competency skills matrix that's been developed through our Governance Advisory Group made up of experts when it comes to governance change, led by Don Story, who's with the CSA, who's done the governance change, leading that with the CSA. And in that competency skills matrix, it lists a number of areas that we would want to see, if possible, on this particular new competency-based board. So for example, having someone who's got a finance background. So we've had, for example, we've had an interest through a third-party person just in the last 12 months of someone who is a CFO of a Bay Street company. Part of their role in their corporate company is to do work in the community to give back. This person's passionate about soccer, has expressed interest to possibly join the OSA Board and is a chief financial officer of a major company. You probably want to have someone, and Ron mentioned with legal expertise, could be a lawyer, could be an obstineman or, is that word again, I always screwed up a little, obstineman, or what have you, someone who understands the legal side of things, who also has experiences in the game of soccer as well and a passion for that. Another area is someone who's played the game and has gone through the entire system as an athlete and has become a successful businessperson. Also, Ron talked about the importance of inclusiveness, of having females on there, having people with disabilities on there, having people from different cultures on there who come from different backgrounds of the game. So I'm just talking an example of types of professional people and common everyday people who just have a, have a passion for the game, but at the same time, they meet the competencies that the board overall is looking for or the new group, the nominations committee is looking for to put together. And I know as a staff person, when I go into quarterly meetings and I go into quarterly meetings with a competency-based board, you have to be very, very prepared in these meetings because they're focused on, and you heard it in the Nova Scotia presentation, they're focused on strategy and metrics and accountability. And as someone in my role who's responsible for staff and operations, I have to report against that, not just information without any facts, but actually how we're making out against certain targets of metrics that we've, we've agreed as a board to realize our strategy and eventually our vision going forward. And you have to be well-prepared, these are people that are very skilled, they're smart, they love the game and they're great custodians of the game and you have to staff be prepared for these types of meetings going into it. So a competency-based board raises, in my opinion, the level of acumen even of professional staff and it raises the entire system that is supported by these people who the members elect. So that's just a little example of the type of competencies that we're looking for.
Do we have any questions from in the room? Great. For those who are still watching on the live stream, we'll be taking questions on Twitter throughout the evening, so please keep asking them, we'll search out as they go through. Gentlemen in the hat.
Yes, my name's Mark and I've been involved in soccer in the London environment at various levels over the years. And the reflection on, a couple of comments first on membership, you talk and foundation of the, of the whole soccer environment, you talk about the clubs being key to that. I would perhaps reflect that I would believe the players and the participants are the real foundation. And I would wonder, how are we going to balance the competitive stream? We've talked about trying to raise our national rankings, we've talked about, you know, increasing competitive development, athlete development, coaching development and all this over the years. How do we understand how to balance just at the participation level so that there aren't barriers to involvement for youth in every socioeconomic forum? I think two things we've seen over the last 10 years that I've seen, we've got the academies booming and they're taking on a certain component of the participation that can afford to be a part of that. We've also seen non-affiliated leagues booming and they're taking a whole different approach and a different element of the participants in this. So they're doing something that's attracting people. How are we going to balance the need for competitive development and increasing the overall participation and reducing some of those barriers of entry?
There's a lot in that comment and question. Sorry, your first name is?
Mark.
Mark, so hopefully I'll answer it in my opinion as best as I can. If I miss anything, please let me know, Mark. First off, your comment about the player as being the central reason of why we exist, the raison d'etre that everyone talks about, you're a thousand percent correct. I think when we're referring to the clubs, that that is our primary distribution center of the services to the players. We've had this discussion many, many times at the board level that from an OSA perspective, our customer is not the 21 districts, our customer combined are the players that play the game and a lot of cases, it's the parents making the decision. And if you, and you very well know because you're a man in the community of sport, there's a lot of choices out there today for kids to play, not just sports, but also that other genre of sport that's coming out called the electronic games industry, which is like a digital disease now and different strains of it is called Xbox and Playstation. But we're fighting against a lot of things for a customer to want to come play the game and experience it. Your comments, so going back to that comment, sorry, what's important to know is that no one owns the game, we don't own the game, the district doesn't own the game, Emsa doesn't own the game, professional soccer doesn't own the game. The only people that really own the game are the players who play. We have two lovely ladies here today, they just got off the pitch and joined us here tonight. They make the decisions at an adult age if they want to play or not. Young kids, they'll make decisions based on what their parents influence them on when they're younger and as they get older, they make their own independent decisions. So you're right, we have to market the game better to our kids to make it easy to play and not over-regulate their experience. On your comment regarding balancing of three streams in sport, recreational soccer, competitive soccer and what I call high-performance soccer, the shine, the attention mostly gets put upon the competitive and the high-performance system. Unfortunately, that's not where the shine should be because the success of the program is built on the foundation, the more kids that play, that want to play at the entry levels, the greater that base will be to support it. And the sport in our country is almost the opposite, the pyramid is upside down and that we're losing more and more recreational players that purely want to play the game and are opting out at ages that are consistent with rates of dropout right now at 12, 13, 14 years of age. And we've done some, a little bit of research with especially match officials who are dropping out younger ages, why they're quitting, we're trying to do some surveying with families of why they've chosen different sports, why they've dropped out. And a lot of them is just that, it's, I just want to sign up to play the game. Why do I have so many rules that are becoming impediments to me? And why can I not just get a match official assignment and do a game and not have parents yell and scream at me, I'm only a certain age? So the better we understand these people, the better we can understand to support them. So at the OSA, yes, we run a high-performance league. We have two leagues matter, in fact, we have an owner of FC London, an operator here with our standards-based league being League One Ontario. We also have the Ontario Player Development League or OPDL. Those are two leagues that we run to serve as part of our long-term player development at that training to compete, training to win stage of the spectrum of LTPD. But we also have tremendous amount of dollars and resources and staff that work at the recreational level, that work with the system to support grassroots soccer so that we're making sure that kids are developing in the proper scope and sequence over their development. So that we don't have four or five-year-olds playing the adult 11 v 11 game on a full-sized field, that we understand that their development has to be positive and their skills have to be developed so they can develop the physical literacy of soccer. All these things are typical development factors, so we spend a lot of time in that area and we always remind ourselves, and I talked to Ben over here, we had this conversation driving up here from Toronto today, about at the OSA, we promote through our various digital channels, be it social media or our website or our newsletter, are we also talking enough, are we doing enough coverage of grassroots recreational soccer? Because there's a lot of great best practices that are going on with some great programs here as well as other parts in every corner of our province, we need to bring more of that information forward through our digital channels to show people what are some great best practices that are going on. So I understand what you're saying, agree with what you're saying, we're constantly making an effort to try to service that recreational area because that is our future going forward. And for the first time, and Ron knows this, for the first time at the CSA level, who's hired Jason DeVos, a product of Ontario and a product of around here, should be very proud of Jason, he's now the new director of development for the CSA and his mandate and the CSA's decision to put someone in that position like that is to look after the development. to look after the development, both coaching and players at the recreational level so the foundation's going to be solid. And Jason's probably listening in on this webcast, I'm sure, and he's kind of nodding his head right now because that's a lot of the work and discussion we're having him right now is on that area of the game, not the high-performance elite level.
We'll have more on Jason a little bit later on. During the break, I was hearing, I was eavesdropping, if you'll forgive me, I was hearing a lot of conversations about what is this going to mean for the districts when it comes to governance reform. Ron, what does it mean for the districts? How is the role of the districts going to change and evolve going forward?
So the districts will now have the opportunity to work directly with the leagues and clubs, spend time where their boots are on the ground. That's what needs to be done. They'll still have an advisory role to the board of directors, the new board of directors going forward, but now from my perspective, they can focus on club business, they can focus on league business. And at the same time, they can network with their neighboring districts to create competitions district to district, or in this case of Region One, where we're looking at what can we be doing in Region One, which includes four districts? How can we improve the game from a competitive level in four districts? So from my perspective and from what I've seen at the CSA level, it's the same for the provincial bodies and the territorial bodies. We meet four times, three or four times a year. And that three or four times a year, we focus on where the best practice are working within the respective provinces or territories. The same issue can happen here, and it is happening. The three of you talk consistently together and have, more importantly, in the last two years than they've ever talked before. So certainly those opportunities are there. Certainly it's up to the people in leadership positions to take those opportunities and raise the bar where the bar needs to be raised at the end of the day. So as I said before, it's not about getting rid of districts, it's about redefining the role, and they'll now wear one hat, and that hat is looking after the clubs and looking after their districts and leagues within that respective area.
Questions from the room? Great. Once again, if you're watching on the live stream, please keep sending questions through Twitter or in the chat, and we'll get to them a little bit later on.
Hi, my name's Jerry. So just going back to something you guys were talking about before Ron was just speaking. I don't want to hijack the meeting, and I like what you guys are doing, but you were talking about rules and kids just want to basically play the game, and rules are stopping them. There's something that came up in last AGA meeting we had, somebody spoke about it, and I thought it was important as well. There's a rule that you guys, the panel made, that says the roster can only have 12 kids on it. So basically 12 kids can be dressed for a game. Now, me and Nunez, your coach, eight-year-old girls, we have 14 on the team. I just don't understand the benefit of having 12 kids dressed for the game, and we got to tell two little kids who are supposed to be developing that they can't play the game today. So I just wanted to see the reasoning, what it is as to what the benefit is to not have those two kids play, or if they have more bad players on the team. You know, we're lucky, we have 14, some people have 16, 17. I just don't see the benefit of kids sitting out when they just want to play the game. So if you could just answer that for me, please.
Do you want me to have a go at this?
Sure. I mean, it's a, this is a good example of whose role and responsibility is that?
Well, at this game, you have to be better than the other players.
Okay, but it's really a technical issue? It's a coaching issue? It's a development issue? And under this new format, John will have access to Johnny's office to have staff come down and discuss that. I think it's important, Johnny, to mention that you've asked Technical for a complete review of the matrices and the grassroots component in total. The LTPD issues that were put in place four years ago, four, almost five years ago, Johnny has asked for a full review. What's working and what isn't working? And from my opinion, that's the opportunity, it was of Jerry? That's the opportunity, Jerry, for that to be brought forward. I was at, I was at a meeting just last week. It was in celebration of the CGSL. The CGSL and the CSL are merging. Two leagues that have over 20 years of history are merging together and looking at operating the male and female section as a combined conglomerate going forward. People have been asking for that for like the last 15 years. It's finally starting to occur. But a gentleman came up to me and said, why do we have rosters of 12 when I think it should be a roster of 13? Said if I have one child who wants to play keeper or whatever it is at the end of the day, I got two sets of lines that I can move in and out, or I got three sets of lines that I can move in and out, because the math makes it easier for me at the end of the day. There's a lot of technical background issues that are built around that. Jason's going to be leading this country in looking and reassessing all those issues going forward. And that's, to your point, Jerry, that's your opportunity to come forward through, hopefully it would be combined, I'm assuming, in this model of a coaching development and athlete development working group who would meet in this area. Because let's not forget, your issues, your capacity, your dynamics here in Emsa is totally different than any other district in the system.
I understand and appreciate that, and I would work eventually in that specific way. But what's there to be there when you guys are here?
Well, I-
It's a big deal for our club. I don't want to have to be just sitting there. If you guys know the rules, I would like to talk, I think, go ahead and ask us to what the benefit of having 12 rosters-
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to take it offline. I'd like you to leave me your information, and through Johnny and I, we'll hook you up with the appropriate people, and we'll have that discussion. Okay? To get that answer, to understand why. Okay, that's my commitment. That's my commitment. Okay, but it's, I mean, this was a governance reform-
Let's bring it back to what we've been talking about here tonight. I appreciate you've got a question, you're passionate about what you- So let's leave it there then. Let's leave it at that point, and we'll follow up with that afterwards. Let's bring it back to what the conversation was a little bit earlier. I've been getting questions on Twitter again, and the question really was from a few people, why are we doing this now as opposed to later? What is the impetus for doing this change now? So perhaps Johnny, you can manage that question.
Why are we doing this now as opposed to later in the future? I think maybe a question that was brought up to us when we started the process, Ron, before I came on board, is why wasn't this done a long time ago? I think the whole idea that, and as Ron covered in his presentation, is that we actually, while we work at our pace to get it right, because we are a bigger, the biggest PSO when it comes to soccer in this country, that we have to make sure we, through proper due diligence, we get it right. But we need to change going forward because we are behind our national governing body and many other provinces in our, in our country, and many other sports in our country, given where we need to be in our organization to better serve, so we're more relevant and current for our membership. So this is a question of why now it's, it has to be done. And Aladdin, I think your perspective right from the very beginning, you've been around a long time, you said seven presidents, you've been around with from the board level. It's that kind of comment that came from Aladdin that this should have been done a long time ago. So we're catching it up. That's what we're doing.
Ben, if you refer to the good governance principles by the CSA, we're being mandated. We're being told. There's no choice here. We have to separate operations from policy, strategic planning, risk management, all the rest of it. So we're being told, and we're saying, and we're being told by our national body, take the lead, province of Ontario, find a solution and a model that's going to work with you. Look at all the best practices there are across the country and implement and execute what works well for the province of Ontario. But Ben, we've been working on this for three years. It'll be three years December the 13th this year. So it's not about starting now. We have been doing this. And I'll tell you, it's been a huge process of communication and education at the district level and at the board level. I can't, I can't quantify the hours and the energy that the board has put into this, but we are in the process. And we're into the point now where we can launch a new type of governance model going forward with the understanding that there will be more change, there has to be more change. When the CSA implemented their new model five years ago, they are still refining and redefining their governance model today. So we need to do this, folks, and it's not that we can put it off, we're being told to do it. And the board, who are the members of this, of this province, of this board, have committed to that and agreed to that and approved that.
Just to reiterate to what Ron said, and you had a slide on this as well, is that this is not just a soccer-specific governance change that's required. This is sport in our country. So at the national level for the Non-For-Profit Societies Act, it was fall of 2013, I believe, that all national non-for-profit organizations, charitable or sport associations had to be compliant under new legislation, and part of that is board governance. The Provincial Act is in our province, which is adopting the National Act, is something that's also coming online. So this is not just proper due governance for, change to be more effective and efficient as a sport. This is our service to the community in a wide range that's being done as a movement across the country.
Any questions on the presentation so far?
My question is, are current district association executives eligible for the board of directors? Because if we see, end up with six district association presidents on this board of directors, we're going to feel lied to.
Right, so the process is that anyone can submit an application to be on the board going forward. As I mentioned before, the nominations committee will do a review, and they'll prepare a full slate of everyone who applied and everybody's competencies and et cetera going forward. The membership, the districts, will vote for those individuals. The only persons who can't sit on the board are the nominations committee, the five individuals who are out recruiting. So the two board members, Joe, who are on that nominations committee, and the three independents are not eligible to sit on that board. District presidents can sit on that board, but if they're successful in achieving then, then they must step down. So they can't be on the board of Emsa, or they can't be on the board of any district, they can't be on a board of a club, they can't be on a board of a league, they can't be on a board of an academy. They must divest themselves from those other levels of governance and just be an OSA director or an OSA board member.
There was another question from Twitter asking about gender equality on the board. You mentioned earlier in the presentation about three female members. Just speak about the importance of what that is for us as an organization and why that's coming into play now.
I'll go first. As a senior staff person, I think it's very, very important. There are a number of very, very successful female soccer people in our province that are operating right now at club levels as volunteers, that are very successful in their lives professionally. That would be great candidates to serve on our board. Our membership now is at 51% of our membership participants are female. And last time I checked, our national women's soccer team's doing pretty good internationally. Our representation for females and women's soccer in general from a leadership perspective, this is a chance now for us to step up and have these people come forward. And I know that there's a lot of people who are very interested in being in these positions because they have success in their life, and many of them have played the game as well. So this board is ready for this. And we talked about inclusiveness, it's not just that, but also we've talked about people representing different cultures, people that also come with, people with disabilities, representing that genre of the sport, because we also have accessible soccer programs as well. So the proper inclusiveness of not going beyond just gender is important on this board, and many, many boards are also doing that as well and taking note of that. In this case, Ron, it's three minimum females, sorry, three of each minimum, correct?
Correct.
There you go.
Durham region has eight women and one man on their district board. So, and I mean, it's being mandated. We're being told by Sport Canada, make the change. Everybody's being told, national, provincial, whatever, everybody's being told. Our subsidies now, Johnny, when you talk about our subsidies from the province and our subsidies from other grant processes, they're requesting that we make these changes as well. And if we don't make these changes, our grants and our subsidies could be jeopardized. This is very important, folks. This is a change, this is a societal change. It's not an OSA change. To me, this is total societal change.
I think Linda Whitehead's going to apply.
Hopefully. Hopefully there'll be a lot of people. And as I mentioned before, we need people for this nominations committee. And I'm hopeful that people will check out the website, and if you feel that you have an interest in this area, please submit an application. The application deadline closes on December the 15th.
We've got about 10 minutes left in the evening. If, how about a question from someone who hasn't answered and won't have asked one yet? Great. On governance reform.
Hello, Edwin Saraxini. Is this change going to cost money to the clubs? Do you foresee financial responsibility being put on the, on the class, on the clubs for this change to happen?
My answer to you is no.
Let it come.
There's too much, there's too much burden on the athlete as it is today. And to Johnny's earlier comments about having corporate people involved in our game going forward, those are the opportunities for us to really look at corporate investment in the game, and hopefully we can look at reduced registration, reduced fees being put forward by registrants, because the system right now is built on the back of parents paying money and to play the game. So at the end of the day, I'm hopeful that we'll see some good corporate investment, Edwin, at the end of the day, and take it forward from there. And governance, it'd be nice to have a footsaw person on the board, Edwin. So I'll put that plug in as well, because athletes, FIFA, CONCACAF have made it very clear that match officials and athletes need to be part of board structure going forward. So there's mandating coming down. I know Don Story is watching tonight. Don is the governance guru, I call him, of the CSA. Don is also working with CONCACAF in restructuring their bodies within the CONCACAF membership. And there are directives that are coming through, and I know in my discussions with Don earlier today, we'll be receiving communication whereby these changes will need and have to be made going forward.
We have a few more questions from email, but if there's someone else in the room who hasn't asked one yet who would like to get involved, please raise your hand. Okay, I'll give you a few more minutes to decide. Ontario are leaders in this country. This comes from email last week. Ontario are leaders in this country when it comes to development. How does it feel now that we're taking on a leadership role in governance as well? And do you expect the rest of this country to take Ontario's lead in this respect? Johnny?
Sink in something here. We're behind, Ben. We're not leading here. In governance, we're behind. When it comes to the game, we're the engine of Canada, but in governance, we're behind. SSA, Saskatchewan, is already there, folks. In fact, Saskatchewan has taken huge steps with respect to their competency board whereby their districts no longer sit on their boards now. So they are way, way ahead of us in that Soccer Nova Scotia, the video you saw. So we're actually, Ben, in the catch-up mode here. And although we are the engine of Canada when it comes to, I think it's 70% of our players, players on national teams, Johnny, come from the province of Ontario, technically we're doing a very good job. Maybe we could be even doing better, but at the end of the day, on the governance side, we're lacking, Ben.
One more question from the audience?
So let's assume you've sold us. What can we do on our board levels and as coaches, the people in this room, to support this? What do you need from us?
Well, we'd like you to communicate. We'd like you to talk to your fellow coach, your fellow member, your fellow registrant at the end of the day. Of course, there'll be a vote. As I said before, for this change, we need two-thirds vote to change the bylaws. If we don't get two-thirds vote, then the vote isn't going to change. So through this process, we're hopeful that the members, which are the districts, through their membership, which are clubs and leagues, will come to the table when it is time for that vote. And that vote's going to take place at a special general meeting in February, February the 11th, to be exact. That'll be an opportunity where we'll know at that point where we sit with respect to support from- support from those who have a vote at the table at the OSA Special General Meeting. So in the interim, we're hopeful that people will talk about this, we're hopeful that people will get involved. As I said before, there's a nominations committee, I realize it's only five, but we're hopeful that people who apply for the nominations committee and potentially may not be selected for the nominations committee, we're hopeful that they'll consider running for a board position. Johnny's in the process of re, redefining and retooling all his operational committees. He's looking for similar type people in the operational committee side who can perform good work on the committee side as volunteers and as staff, to get that, that quality, to get that competent person on the operational committee side. We'll have standing committees as well, no reason why people in this room can't be part of that if they so desire and have the competency to fill it. So it's, right now, it's about communication, that's the reason for these town hall meetings, it's about getting the word out there, and I'll be quite frank, there are some districts who are not supporting. There are some who are not supporting. And it, it concerns me, so, but we're going to take a very positive approach to what we're doing. I think it's about education and communication. Really, it's about looking after our athletes, Mark. What you talked about was the athlete. Everybody in this room makes that statement, "I'm here for the athlete." Well, this is an opportunity to really support the athlete, the match official, the coach, and the administrator of this organization with a model that's 30 years old, needs to be changed. So I would hope that everyone in this room will continue to support and promote it, and that people who are on livestream will also consider and communicate and promote it going forward.
This is an interactive experience, and the live chat has been asking questions throughout the night, so I'll ask one from them. Chris S. asks, "How are academies represented in this new model?"
Okay, thank you, Chris, for that question. It was also mentioned earlier, I think Mark brought it up, about the role of academies and definition of it's private academies. This has been a project, actually, that's in our strategic plan, under partnerships and organizational stability, and those two pillars that Ron showed earlier. And what we are currently doing at the OSA is that we are closely looking at private academies, and what define private academies, not academies that are attached to a club that's a program within a traditional club, but actual private for-profit academies that are operated. We have, we have two organizations that have been well organized over the last number of years. SAC, for over a decade now, have been operating with 21 private academies and producing players at the competitive and high-performance level, and in some cases with a number of their academies providing players that have moved on to higher levels of the game. CAF, which is a newer organization, Canadian Academy of Football, came on board about, Ron, am I going to say about seven years ago, approximately, and they have about 35 to 40 academies and growing. The difference of the two is that SAC actually has standards to their academies, their 21, apply to the OSA under, under OSA approval as associate members and have to meet certain standards, whereas CAF operate as a, as a league within itself and operate and registered right now within our current rules as a club with one of our districts. So what we're doing going forward is we're trying to solve the puzzle of where private academies fit within the soccer experience, if you will, in this province. So we put together an academy working group, different versions of the academy working group over the last couple of years, and since this is a part of our strategic plan starting this year, we had a group put together to look at how we're going to deal with this, and we put together a model that would see private academies playing in their own stream, called the Academy Soccer Stream, under the governance of the Ontario Soccer Association, so that you've got players that would play your traditional club stream over here, and those players that want to compete for the Ontario Cup would compete in this area over here, and over on this right side would be a private academy stream that would compete for a private academy cup. And the only place that there would be crossover would be at special showcase tournaments, charitable events, friendlies, but more importantly, it'll be at the high-performance level. We're at OPDL and League One, where right now in League One, we do have some private academies. They would compete at that level, at the high-performance level. So this model, I was just recently presented to the board back in June, as well as recently in September, the OSA board, and a two-year pilot project was approved, and we're currently in discussions with the SAC organization. We've had some presentations and meetings with their board, and we're currently working with them to see if they would work in partnership with us, since they've got over 17 years of academy experience on how to run private academies, and they want to be a part of our system, and the inclusiveness, one of our values of the Ontario Soccer Association also includes private academies working with us. Private academies are growing, they're an option to players. I use the example of public education versus private education. I haven't figured out yet how you can homeschool a soccer player, but nevertheless, those are options that are out there right now, and that's what the consumer is being faced with. So we grow and we build and strengthen our traditional club model, but at the same time, we want to bring in private academies, so we can work to make the system unified and simple to understand and build so that the players can move through the systems on either side of the stream. Because as I said, again, the customer, which is the player and the parents, they're the ones making the decision, not any different than how education is in our province.
That's going to do it for tonight, folks. I want to thank you very much for all coming out, and also I'd like to ask to give you a round of applause to yourselves, because this community is what builds soccer in Ontario. We're up here as leaders and representatives of you, and it's you that are the ones that are going to carry us forward in this province, so please give a round of applause for yourselves. While we have your attention, this week, early bird tickets went on sale for the Ontario Soccer Summit. If you don't know what the Ontario Soccer Summit is, it's the premier development opportunity for coaches, match officials, administrators, everybody under the game in Ontario. Last year, we had 500 participants come out and spend a weekend of learning, great opportunities again this year, that will be taking place at Trenton University as well as at the Oshawa Civic Recreational Centre. This combination venue is going to create the perfect backdrop for Ontario's definitive soccer development conference. So as I said, the tickets have gone on sale this week, and as I mentioned earlier, Jason DeVos is our first announcement as a speaker, keynote speaker this year. The Soccer Director of Development at Canada Soccer is coming to our Soccer Summit in March, March 3rd to 5th. So if you're looking for tickets, you can find them on OntarioSoccer.net, and we encourage you and welcome you and hope that we'll see you all there in March. Thanks very much, folks, and have a great night.